I would, I would. Just a moment. All right, and I am going to get me over to, tried to make up a little bit more efficient this, this afternoon. So hello again, my name is Kate Meredith and I am with Geneva Lake Astrophysics and Steam, we're Glass Education in Williams Bay, Wisconsin. And I'm still a soundly middle-aged white woman with long hair, my pronouns are she/her/hers. And today I am still in my office as is yesterday, but today I've added the office dog on the chair behind me. And behind the office dog Ranger, there is the office ball python, Greta. So Greta's sleeping and so is Ranger. So today I'm really excited to end our week with more specifics about how we can go about making the American Astronomical Society meetings more intrinsically accessible and increase the inclusivity and the feeling that everyone really belongs to as part of these meetings. So the low-hanging fruit, as Cheryl Burke-Stahler said yesterday, is really about making them more visually, improving our presentations in that way. And so we're going to continue with our presentation from yesterday, knowing that these are, this presentation, it really is aimed specifically at a double AS meeting, these large conferences where presentations are made in medium-sized to large rooms, or the poster presentations are made in exhibit halls that are noisy, somewhat difficult to navigate. There's a lot of people around, a lot of things going on, so we're really looking at those elements specifically. And Dr. Burke-Stahler yesterday was, pointed out something that I want to circle back to for us as a group, that that in general, when you as a caterer at the college level are creating accessible materials for your classroom, that HTML and websites are better placed to plant your materials. For our double AS meetings, we have decided that to present to you creating an accessible PDF. Because of a couple of reasons, it allows you to create a URL that you can continue to update until the last minute before your presentation, as 90% of us are want to do for the double AS meetings. And also allows people to call them up easily on their phones or their laptops during the meeting and follow along and access your materials that way. And it's not, it's more a fluid way of putting together materials. But because PDFs do present some problems, some hurdles, we're going to have you put together your most accessible version of your poster or your presentation, create a PDF and then send it to us. We will take care of that last step where we create, where we do an accessibility check on that. Cheryl Vogelhatch, who is a screen reader proficient, she depends on them for all of her access. She'll be helping us make sure that those that PowerPoint did what it expected to do. And those of you who might be trying other platforms, we can go on a little adventure together. So with that, I'm going to continue with where we left off yesterday. We looked at all of the elements in Elias et al. about the pieces of presentations that need to be looked at and made accessible. And so now we're at the point in our PowerPoint where we wanted to see if we can use the accessibility checker that's available in PowerPoint. So I'm going on to slide 32, if you have those slides available from yesterday, we also put that URL in the chat box and someone can repost that in case not everyone got that. So I'm on slide 32, how to activate the accessibility checker. If you're in PowerPoint, you're going to go to along the top of the review panel. So if you click review, then a ribbon of additional buttons shows up and you're going to find, look for the accessibility checker. That's the next thing you're going to do. And it will pop up with a panel on the far right-hand side that'll let you know all the things that you might have done incorrectly. I'm on slide 33, which shows the accessibility checker as it appears on the right-hand side, and it shows your inspection results. You're going to get a couple of different kinds of inspection results here. It's going to tell you what slides you missed alt text on or description, image description. It'll tell you if you were missing any titles and it'll give you other warnings. The most warnings you'll get are to check the order of your slides, because that's the order, the reading order in the slides that we covered yesterday. The only way to check that is have a human eye look at it and to see, is the slide going to read off in the way that you intended it to? So we'll take a little closer look at that in a moment. Next slide is, you're going to manually adjust the reading order. So this is a thing that you want to do by hand for each and every one of your slides. So you're going to go to, if you, in your accessibility checker, if it says, you know, you need to take a look at the reading order, you can go back to the home tab and you're going to select a range. And then you're, in the right-hand side, a select, your selection panel for that will pop up. And I'm going to show you this in just a second. On this slide, I also show you an example, I'm going to start looking at posters. So this is an example poster I did several years ago. And I planted the accessibility for this poster on a website. And so if I wanted to do this for an accessible PDF, I would need to do quite a bit of work on this in terms of going through all of those steps for making this accessible. So let's see my next slide, the reading order pane, you find it by going to the home tab. So it shows on the right-hand side what the home tab looks like, it's very long. And then you're going to go all the way to the end and you're going to look for a button that says arrange. And on that arrange button, once you see a little down arrow on that, so when you click on the arrange button, you're going to, on slide 36, it's going to show you that menu that pops up. And there's no keyboard shortcut for this unfortunately, so you just gotta weave through this menu all the way to the bottom of that menu that pops up from the arrange panel. You're going to look for your selection pane. And that's what's going to activate that selection pane on the right-hand side. So reading order for posters gets a bit complicated. So not only do you have to take into account the actual text, but you have to make sure that visual elements don't appear on the, on the slide itself, so you can hide those. And I'm going to show you how to do that in just a minute. But so I'm going to go back here and then I'm going to see if I can be fancy here and go to my other pane. Okay, excellent. So on, I'm changed windows right now and you should be looking at my PowerPoint program right now. And I'm going to scroll down to find the slide that I'm looking at here. Actually, I'm going to look at the, the one that's up right now is the slide from yesterday on the equations editor option. And in the right-hand menu, you'll see that I've opened all of, have all of the accessibility tabs open. So I see a selection pane tab, an alt text tab, and then the accessibility checker tab are all open. And when I get to the end of my presentation and I want to do the entire check, I like having all of these open at the same time. So on this slide, particular slide, on the right-hand side of the selection pane is showing, and it shows slide number moving from the bottom to the top. And that might be a little counterintuitive to visual folks, but this is how it's going to read in the screen reader. It's going to read what you have on the bottom and move toward the top. So in this pane, I see slide number, then the slide title, content placeholder, picture eight and picture nine. So I'm going to click on slide number. And when I click on, click on slide number, the box in, in the actual construction window for a PowerPoint is outlined. So I see, yes, the slide number is outlined. And I changed these text in here to say slide number, what originally said was content holder. And I wanted to make sure that it was explicit, this is a page, this is just a slide number. And so for each slide in the PDF, the screen reader will read the slide number first. The next thing, moving up click, is the title. You'll see that the title, equation editor options is now highlighted in the middle window. And it says title one, and that's what it will read, it will read equation editor options. Content placeholder two now is highlighted and it has the bulleted text in that window. Choose your equation templates, create your own from scratch. Those two are highlighted and that, those bullets are what would be read next. Moving up, picture eight and then picture nine. Now, this is where I would then also go to the alt text tab. And I would check to see is my alt text actually written in here. So yes, it's written in, I can change that if I want to or adjust it. And it's the accessibility checker tab over on the far right of the far right of the screen that tells me if I have any warnings left to address. And I, because I worked really hard on this presentation, I have none less, except for it's always telling me, please check your reading order. And it'll keep telling you that until you, after, long after you've done it. There's no way to shut off that warning. So, so again, starting at the selection pane, this is where I'm going to click and drag things into a different order. So if I wanted slide number to be read after the title, I would click and drag it above the title in the selection pane window. Now let's say I really don't want it to read all the slide numbers in the PDF, that that's, that's not necessary. So I could leave it where it was at the bottom and I could hide it for the PDF. So for the creation of the PDF, I clicked the, there's a little eye icon to the far right. If I click that, you'll notice that that disappears. So the slide number now disappears from the slide. So if you wanted to create a PDF that was slightly different from your presentation and had elements that were hidden so that it didn't clutter up the listening experience for someone using a screen reader, this is where you would do it, in the selection pane. And I find that that to be fairly helpful. This is also a place where in the selection pane for some slides, I'm going to scroll up and see if I can find one here. On slide 31, I believe, I didn't, slide 31 wasn't it, just a moment. Um, yes, in slide 23, I had, my apologies folks, I should have done my homework a bit more. One of the things you can do, if you have created a slide text, a number of pictures, if you want them all grouped together, you can actually select them all, group them together. If you don't, like on this slide, want it to read the picture, the text box that's on the slide and the arrow. So on this one, I did actually group these, but when I saved it, it shows up differently, so my apologies on this. So again, the point I wanted to make that is, if you create a slide, we have a number of different elements that you don't want to all be read, it is possible to hit shift and select all of those elements and group them on the group menu. And then you can designate what that is and what reading order it is. And I can help people with this when we get further along in our, our development of our slides for the double AS meeting. So those are some of the, again, when you're getting ready to create your PDF, this is where you're going to go. And being able to go down quickly through all of the slides and have them show up in that run menu makes it fairly quick to go through and adjust all of your alt text, adjust all of your reading orders. Okay, so the final thing that you're going to do as part of your presentation process, if I can get back to my slideshow, in particularly when you're doing posters, you'll see again that there's boxes on your posters, particularly in the header and the footer area, that you might have changed the color background using a box. You can hide those, so I showed you how to hide that from being read. Or you can just mark it in the alt text, there's a small box that you can use to mark it as decorative. So I'm going to go back actually and show you that, just a moment, see if I can go back. So when you're in the alt text for a particular element, I click on that element and I can mark that element as decorative. There's a small box here and that means it's not going to read it, it's not going to include it in on here. You also, one thing else I would point out to you that you may have already noticed is on each and every one of these slides, I have included the Glass Education logo on the slides. And that, that's not showing up anywhere. I put it in my master slides and I marked it as decorative there. The only place that that logo is actually explained or identified is on the title slide. So for somebody who's relying on a screen reader, they don't really need to know that my logo is, read my logo every time they hit a new slide. So I've made sure that that's hidden from view. And there's a couple of different ways you can do that, so just letting you know that that is an option. So again, use the decorative, mark as decorative button and the screen reader will not read that element. So example, my, my arrow here, I don't, I have marked that as decorative because I have explained that graphic in a different way in previous alt text. And they don't need to know that there's an arrow sitting on this page that's purely visual interest. All right, back to my slide presentation, I'm going to finish up on slide of, we're going to create a PDF now. So once you've been through your accessibility check and you're happy with how things are going, and then you want to create a PDF. On slide 39, I have a graphic up that says, create and share Adobe PDF. Now, if you cannot find this button, I want you to go to your IT department or ask a smart friend. Because depending upon the, your school's, your institution's version and what kind of licensing they have with Microsoft, this Adobe PDF create and share may or may not be as visible or may not be available, but it should be to you, because that's the best way to make accessible PDFs. Do not use any of the other techniques you've done, especially in the save menus or print, particularly print. If you are used to saving things as a PDF from the print menu, just get rid of that as far as an accessibility option, you will break most of your accessibility doing it that way. So again, strongly recommend that you find the create and share Adobe PDF from your Microsoft PowerPoint menu. And if you can't, check with someone at your institution. And after you do that, that's the document that you're going to send to accessible@glasseducation.org. I'll have that email address up for you later. And then we'll take a look at what's next for double AS presenters. And I will go back over this a little bit later, end of our presentation, but you will be, we will be giving you the rubrics. We will provide you with a hack day, if particularly if you're doing a poster. I've decided that since I kind of shortchanged posters here, that all of the things that I've talked about is, works for posters in PowerPoint. But the posters get a little bit complicated, they might get too many details going, you might need a little bit of help. I'm going to provide a hack day on Wednesday, January 5th at 12:00 PM Central Time. And if, and I'll be sending out Zoom links for that, but just put that on your calendar about a week before the double AS meeting. And that should be about the time you're really getting ready for printing your posters. And I will give you a hand with that. And at the double AS meeting, then we will be going around, we'll be there. And I'll be trying to meet up with as many of you as possible and help right up until the last minute to make your accessible presentations accessible. So we are going to, I'm going to hand this off to, to Caitlin to take the presentation from here. And we will talk in the end about making a QR code for where you play, wherever it is that you place your presentation. Caitlin, are you ready? I'll stop sharing. Or do you want me to share and move the slides?
Actually, it would be really convenient for me if you just keep sharing and I don't have to worry about it.
I will do that, I will do that.
Sounds great. Yes, so as we kind of explained, this workshop is special compared to our other presentations because it is a partnership between Sci Access, Glass Education and the double AS. So in addition to being the host here, I am also going to speak on some of the very important topics that Anna and I often present on when trying to teach people how to make accessible presentations. So we've kind of taught you how so far to make your materials more accessible. So your slides and all these things that you're doing prior to the presentation. But now that we've talked a bit about that, we want to also transition into talking about how to actually present excessively. So once you're at the conference, what do you do there? And we're going to first begin with the discussion of the organization of an accessible event. So if you are on a committee that helps arrange accessible events or you have some sort of influence within double AS in speaking, in putting on some sort of outreach events or not necessarily double AS, but at your institution or anything like that. So we're going to start very broad and then become very specific to at the double AS presentations, what should you be doing? So beginning more broadly, what is usually hard about accessibility at a double AS event? And Kate, on to the next slide.
Oops. Sorry about that.
No problem. So as I mentioned, we're going to begin with event accessibility and then move into specific presentation accessibility and poster accessibility. So what is usually hard about accessibility at a double AS event? The event itself. There are a couple of different suggestions that we have for putting on an accessible event. Namely, things like ensuring at the very baseline that people can get to your event. So physical accessibility, people are able to get to and fully participate in your event physically. So this begins with making sure, for example, all of your locations are wheelchair accessible. As part of the Sci Access 2019 conference, we had a star party that went on, which we have a photo of on, on the screen, where we have individuals gathered on a sidewalk with several different levels of telescopes at different heights, so that people who were in wheelchairs were still able to access telescopes. And beyond that, at OSU, usually our star parties hosted by the Astronomical Society were hosted on top of a laboratory on a rooftop, which has no elevator to the rooftop. So if you have a conference that you're helping with or an outreach event that's on, that's added on to a conference or any sort of event, and you're hosting it on a rooftop or in a grassy field, you need to be aware that if anyone is in a wheelchair, whether as part of a permanent disability or because of temporary issue, they will not be able to access your event. And if your telescopes are too high, they won't be able to participate in your event. So these are things that you need to keep in mind. Additionally, something else that can be really helpful is making sure that people can actually get around once they're at your event. So things like a tactile map of the building or BLV guide volunteers, so blind or low vision guide volunteers. Obviously, those are things that you need to take into account prior to things going on. You need to train those guide volunteers, you can't just have anyone guiding people around. And the tactile maps will have to be printed prior. But essentially what those are, are just normal maps with raised lines and bumps to show people the layout of the building and what's going on. So if you can't see, you can still get around. Additionally, something that was really a big takeaway from Sci Access 2019 is how valuable things like a sensory friendly room or quiet room is. So this is especially true for those who are neurodiverse or on the autistic spectrum or have some sort of sensory processing need. However, we found that all of our attendees appreciated somewhere quiet and comforting that they could be during the chaos of an ongoing conference. So on this slide, we also have a photo of a very cute little dog over someone's shoulder. And this was something that we did through partnership with a student org at OSU called Four Paws for Ability. And this student org trains guide dogs and in general accessibility, not accessibility dogs, but I'm missing the word.
Service animals.
Service animals, thank you Kate. Trained service animals for use through having students help train them. So we partnered with them in order to have some service dogs come in and play with attendees during breaks. And this was obviously something that everyone enjoyed. Everyone loved playing with puppies regardless of whether or not they were disabled and needed somewhere to sit quietly in between conference talks. Additionally, speaking of sitting, accessible seating is something that's really important. This not only means that wheelchair users can get around chairs that are placed in your conference halls, but also that those chairs are very comfortable, or very least there's a comfortable alternative to rigid conference chairs. That's really helpful, not only for individuals who cannot stand for long periods of time, but also individuals who have chronic pain and can't sit in really rigid conference chairs for six hours or however long the event is going on. Another thing that is not on this slide, but is very important, is high tables. Another bit of physical accessibility, like I mentioned, is making sure that everyone can get to and participate in your events. And this is actually, that's something that's come up at our events. Recently, I helped put on Mission Astro Access and that launch. And that was an amazing opportunity and was so enjoyable. But when we were working with a hotel, we had to make several adjustments last minute. For example, we had this big celebratory event right the night before the launch. And all of the tables out in the courtyard were high-top. And we had put all of our flyers and all of our little event pieces like 3D models and postcards and little robots on these tables. And I came out and I went, oh no, no, none of our three different individuals who are in wheelchairs can reach any of these things. So we had to pull up little stools to make essentially a secondary table that was lower down to make sure that individuals who were in wheelchairs could still reach these materials. Beyond that, if you're at a networking event and all the tables are high-top, then it makes it really hard to talk to people and interact when everyone, you have to stare up at someone the entire time. Or if you can't stand for long periods of time, there isn't anywhere for you to stand. So that's something to keep in mind when you're planning these sorts of events. In general, during our 2019 event, we focused not only on amazing speakers, but also amazing outreach events, which is why I mentioned not only things that might happen during a conference, but other things that you might have going on. On the left here is a photo of the poster hall featuring a young girl learning how to play wheelchair basketball with the Paralympic Society of Central Ohio. And as I mentioned, we also had our interactive star party event, which had those accessible levels of telescopes. Now, on this next slide are some very important points that you have probably noticed over the course of this conference, which is ASL interpreting and cart captioning. We highly, highly recommend live cart captioning versus automatic captioning as it is far more accurate and preferred for individuals who do rely on captioning. It tends to especially be good in a professional technical setting with our very specific words, which as we all know, automated captions can often interpret in very interesting and incorrect ways. This is greatly preferable to deaf participants to use cart captioning and ASL interpreting because without these sort of opportunities, and in general with these sort of accessibility opportunities, not including accommodations for people who are deaf or are blind, leads into this sort of cycle of inaccessibility. Where individuals aren't attending your events because they aren't accessible. And because they aren't attending your events, you don't think they need to be accessible. So that's one of the reasons why we're even here today presenting to the double AS to improve these options. We went over this a little bit earlier, but Braille and large pin materials are very important to ensure that blind and low vision attendees get the same experience with flyers or other handouts that are available to all attendees. Slide descriptions, which we've discussed at length already, of making sure that everyone knows what is on the screen. And then finally, color communication badges, which is not something that's come up yet. This was something that we implemented during our in-person conference. A system recommended to us by the Autistic Self Advocacy Network where participants had these slips of paper to display on their name badge. One was red, one was yellow and one was green. And it conveyed their level of communication preference non-verbally to other participants. Under that system, red meant that they were not interested in talking and they were taking a break. Yellow meant they'd love to socialize, but only people that they knew. And then green meant, I'm here to meet new people and network. And that's again, something that's really great, not only for individuals who might be neurodiverse, but everyone. We also had Braille on those badges so that our blind or low vision attendees knew which color they were presenting. Now, our third of these slides is on intentional inclusivity, which is really important. Universal design is a running theme throughout this conference. And one thing that is really important to conceptualize is why we are advocating for universal design. One thing that you might have heard of as a good thing to include is pronouns, which is not only something on event-wise scale, but individual as well. So pronouns on all name tags and in introductions as a default, not as an added point for those who deem it necessary. This helps to normalize communication of pronouns. This helps to normalize communication of pronouns by having it be the default option. During registration in, at the Syx's twenty nineteen conference, we had this option uh, as the default and something that people could opt out of if they felt it necessary. With this process, about ninety-eight percent of attendees included pronouns on their name tags. And it really helped encourage inclusivity and prevented those that did often need to clarify their pronouns from feeling like they stuck out for having them displayed. That's something that we are including in this conference as well, as you can see that many of our presenters and especially our Syx's team have pronouns in their name tags. Unfortunately, this was a really new feature on Zoom, so it's not something that we have set up for everyone, especially because it isn't something we can do during registration. Where we print out a name tag for you, it's much more individualized. But still, if you have an updated Zoom or, uh, if you use another platform, I'd highly recommend looking up to see how you can add these and, uh, whether that would be something that you can do for future events. Now, if you haven't considered accessibility in events at all prior, which as we're on day two of this workshop, hopefully you have. This can all be really confusing and overwhelming, but as always, it's really important to remember that you can always reach out to local resources. Like the local school for the deaf, school for the blind, a local federation for the blind chapter or larger organizations such as Autism Self Advocacy or Sci Access or Glass Education or Kate and I or Anna or anyone that you find, uh, who might be able to help in order to ask for guidance and advice and to get expert opinions from those who may have actually experienced these issues. Of course, one thing that I really want to make sure is known throughout these workshops is we don't expect you to be an expert. We do, however, expect you to try to learn and to try to do better in future. So now that we've discussed things on a more wide scale, on this next slide, we're going to discuss what about when you are an attendee, not an organizer? So even when you're an attendee, obviously you can advocate for these things that we've been mentioning. And as you can, on, uh, as we will discuss on this slide, a lot of those features on the event wide scale are also features that you can do yourself. So things like displaying your pronouns, making your slides legible with large text, offering slides for download or for viewing online and describing things on the slide are all different, uh, act, or actions that you can take on a personal level, regardless of the accessibility of the event as whole. Another thing that we do want to acknowledge is that there is a real deficiency in the double A S conference in general in terms of ASL and cart captioning. The question of what can I do if my event doesn't offer cart captioning or interpreting? I'm not in charge of that. I can't do that is something that is a very valid and real concern. Right now, we know that four percent of double A S's attendees are deaf or hard of hearing, but there isn't a lot of accessibility for them right now, apart from possibly, uh, requested accommodations to get an interpreter in specific events. So we want to just acknowledge that accommodations we are advocating to be provided will take time and logistical difficulty in order to get added, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't discuss them. Specifically there, I want to ask Kate if you have anything to add as the more, as a person who's actually attended double A S before.
Yes, um, just because of the size of the double A S meeting, this is a logistical hurdle that we do need to address. So, uh, double A S has been making incremental, incremental improvements in, uh, and their general accessibility of the conference. Uh, but this is an area because of cost, et cetera. There's some barriers to this. So we do know, we do know from their own surveys that we do have significant hearing issues amongst the membership, especially as astronomers tend to stay in the field into their late seventies. Uh, that's not uncommon. And so, uh, so we know that this is an issue. We know that we can do something about it. Um, making sure that you don't hide behind the podium and that as much as possible, you stand up. And if you can, make sure that you're speaking at a pace that if someone is attempting to read lips, um, put that they can have, uh, text on your slide, making sure those slides are available with, um, uh, if there's additional text that's needed, that would be helpful as well. So there's some things that you can do to mitigate things, uh, as we go along.
That's something that we're really trying to drive home is regardless of what happens at the event and what is going on at the event and the accessibility of the event, you can still do something on a personal level to improve an individual's experience of your talk. So we have some more suggestions on this next slide, namely what Kate has briefly mentioned prior of announcing slide numbers or calling on a friend to do it for you. Alternatively, announcing the title of each slide, which helps individuals who, uh, who are following along using, uh, link that you sent or document that you sent or any sort of handout. Make sure that they can follow along, even regardless of if they can see or hear you, where you are in the presentation. So just making sure that they know the slide number that they need to be, uh, watching out for. Additionally, that QR code that if you were here yesterday during this presentation time was shared right at the beginning, big and bold and scan me now, um, that's something that could be really helpful because it means then that you don't have a bunch of people distracted typing in a URL, but you just hold up your phone and get those slides on your phone so that if you are someone who is blind or not specifically blind, but low vision, you can see those slides really up close. Kate, I think you have something to add.
Yeah. And I just wanted, it's for those of you who haven't been to a double A S meeting. It is almost, it's going to be impossible for you to display a QR code prior to your presentation. Most oral presentations have a maximum of five minutes with two minutes of questions and they stick to that really tightly. One of the things we'll be advocating for when we meet with the, um, double A S leadership is that, uh, we, we take a look at the length of the presentations and allow people additional, uh, you know, thirty seconds to display a QR code, but until that time, uh, what we, we suggest you do with your QR code is be ready to have it at the back of the room with your presentation title and you're going to need to have someone there, um, taking on the role of, of having that QR code available at the back of the room. We're going to work on uh, talking to double A S leadership about how we might make those more available. But for now, have them printed, have them by your poster, um, and have them ready at your, um, at your presentation. And I will be there to assist, um, uh, wherever possible. We'll see how many presentations I can get around to.
Yes, absolutely. We are dedicated to helping improve this for each individual person who wants to improve. So if you have any concerns, comments, questions, please again, feel free to reach out. Even if you aren't a double A S presenter, we would still love to hear from you. May not get as high priority since the January double A S presentation or conference is coming up, but of course, we always want to hear from people on their questions or comments on how we can improve or how you can improve. So, uh, speaking of posters, the last thing that I am going to talk about here is how to present accessibility, uh, accessibly with a poster. So first of all, the most accessible thing for a poster is a person. So having a person standing next to your poster and explaining on a personal level to whoever needs it, whether that's someone who is deaf or someone who is blind, who is asking, hey, could, what does, what is on your poster? Or can I ask you a question on what this means? Having someone there to interface personally with the public is something that can be absolutely invaluable in terms of accessibility. You should also, if you are going to have someone there, be prepared to answer questions that you might not have experienced before, like if someone can't see your poster, consider how you would describe it or how you would explain models or graphs that are on the poster to someone who can't necessarily see them. Speaking of models and graphs, the idea of adding tactile models or graphs, uh, or any sort of hands-on materials is something that would be absolutely amazing and probably really surprising to a blind or low vision person who's attending a double A S conference. But something that can be absolutely invaluable to teaching, uh, anyone about material in a way that is fully accessible to them. I myself have been teaching, um, Xena students using three D models and the way that people react when their, this data is made accessible to them is really, really amazing. So if you have the opportunity to create tactile models and you have the means, I would highly recommend it as a way to make your presentation more accessible. Additionally, as we mentioned, QR codes in high contrast on your poster to make sure that people can either listen to or see, uh, your poster up close, if they need to get really close to it, is really important. Another way to make that accessible is outlining the QR code with a raised line. And this is something that doesn't even need to be high tech. You can take a glue gun and put a little square around the QR code so people know where to point their phones or anything like that. And this is something that we're actually trying to standardize with double A S. So determining where a QR code will go will be the same for everyone, whether it's the bottom right corner or the bottom left corner. We're hoping to make that standard as we're working with double A S leadership.
Yeah, as of right now, we think that the best way to do that is to have a piece of paper, um, that sits on the table. Because everyone gets that skinny little piece of table space in front of their poster to have the QR code taped to the table, um, and orient that table with either, uh, you know, that QR code with some sort of outline and, um, that will be really helpful. Um, because putting it on the poster, uh, so it doesn't allow you to change it very easily and it, um, it, uh, forces someone with a phone to have to orient it vertically and, you know, then, uh, at a table, that's easier to actually get the picture.
Absolutely. So with that, I'm actually going to pass things back to Kate for closing statements.
All right, double A S members, um, again, we are going to make this presentation and some additional resources available to you by December eighth. We will include the rubric, which is basically the presentation, put on a grid for you and let you know how we're going to score this. This isn't about making you bad or wrong. In fact, I'm not going to attach your name to any of the scoring. So well, that will be anonymous. What we really want to do is look at how, how, what kinds of, of things did you implement? Um, how much support did you get to implement those and, and how far did we get? So it's about that. So we'll give you the rubric. Uh, we're going to be available to answer your questions. Uh, as Elias at L said, if you provide mentorship and support um, in a way that's non-shaming, uh, the people are going to come along and add, do a better job and implement more features. So accessible@glasseducation.org will be available to you. Uh, double A S poster accessibility hack day on Wednesday, January fifth, um, at twelve PM Central Time. If it looks like, I will send out an invitation well before that. If it looks like it's going to be, it's, uh, going to be overflowing. Or you let me know that you need a different day or people making invitations would like a different day. Or, you know, just let us know, but I'm going to start with that just to make the commitment. And, uh, when you're done, I want your source file and the PDF that you generated from PowerPoint sent to us. We will check that PDF for accessibility and make sure we get it back to you. Uh, that's not going to be on you, but do pass it through the accessibility checker on, um, PowerPoint. And then Sci Access leaders will review your work and report results by early March. So we're going to take all those presentations and we're going to sit down and we're going to fill out that rubric and we're going to gather some data. And we're going to be at the double A S meeting as well. And my hope is that we'll get some additional support so that, uh, Caitlin can come too. And we can be at the double A S meeting and take a random sampling of people who didn't attend this workshop and just compare, how well did we do? Because what we're looking at is we want to make an overall impact over the years in accessibility. Make it a more inclusive, um, meeting space for people. We are also going to be meeting with the, um, uh, with the double A S leadership accessibility team about how, um, improvements that we can make. And Dr. Fogel Hatch will be working with the iPoster people to see what we can do about improving accessibility uh, to both the, uh, construction tool for i-posters and the, uh, i-poster panels that are at the, um, meeting themselves. So those are the things we've got in the works and, uh, welcome your questions.